Good evening. Welcome to the Northampton City Council meeting of May 15, 2014. I'm City Council President David White. I am presiding. Tonight, for those of you who are interested in having a pre-sale of the meeting, we're principally going to -- the biggest item is the mayor is going to be presenting his budget. We're not voting on the budget. The budget will eventually be sent to public hearings that we will notify the public once we figure out when those meetings will be. But it's kind of a big deal, given the fact that it's one of the most, if not the most important thing that we do. Before we convene, we traditionally have the public comment section, which is just before the council meeting, and you can speak on any topic. It doesn't have to be relevant to what's on the agenda tonight, but with these caveats, please keep your remarks under three minutes, and there'll be a timer. So right about there, and it'll count you down. And, um, thank you. And we ask that when you step up, you state your name and your address for the record. And also, please consider your comments when you're making them. Please do not comment or name people, private people, by name or their addresses because they are not public figures. You, however, on the other hand, as I've said before, you're welcome to libel the bejesus out of us if you're interested, because we're amenable to that. Well, we're not amenable to it, we're susceptible to it. So starting up on the list, I have Catherine Morish, please.
Do I get my address?
Um, yes, if you just restate your name and give your address. And by the way, I should also, one thing I didn't note was that the council's not allowed to respond or answer any questions that you may ask, just so you know. I get to speak clearly, but I won't. So yes, if you could just, Catherine, just for the record, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Catherine Morish, and I live at 9 Prospect Heights, Northampton.
Okay.
I'm going to read this instead of talk, because it's shorter.
That's fine, that's perfectly fine.
The spraying of synthetic pesticides on trees is known to be dangerous to humans and animals. Cancer hospitals such as Sloan-Kettering have long warned of the dangers of pesticides. This exposure is cumulative and can cause cancer, damage to neonatal development, endocrine disruptors, and possibly Parkinson's disease. Neighbors are often not notified, and passersby, including young children on their way to the Jackson Street School, which I saw last week, are in danger of chemical exposure. Residents of this thickly settled neighborhood are also being exposed to chemicals which are not yet proven safe. We all want to protect our trees, but is spraying dangerous chemicals into urban neighborhoods really the best or even acceptable way to do this? Many state agricultural agencies recommend elimination or minimalization of synthetic pesticides. I'm not making any horticultural suggestions as to how to protect our trees. I'm not an expert in that area. I do suggest that we suspend tree spraying until recommendations as to the best methods to proceed are obtained from specialists at the University of Massachusetts. Last week, the American Lung Association gave Hampshire County a failing smog grade. Do we really want to add more chemicals to this already dangerous level of pollution? I am deeply concerned about protecting the most vulnerable who do not have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have your letter submitted into the public record as well. Barbara Rakoszka, please.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Rakoszka of 571 Florence Road. Thank you for allowing the public to speak. I think this is great in a democracy. I do want to thank Peter Colcott and Senator Rosenberg for getting money in the budget for the Florence Road and Ryan Road intersection. It's a very dangerous intersection, and for nine years, City Councilor Mary Ann LaBarge and I, and the mayor, when he was on the Transportation Committee, have been to many meetings. There have been design studies done, and now there is money in the budget for it. It's a very dangerous intersection with people crossing at the crosswalk to go to the convenience store. I don't know if you know Florence Road and Ryan Road, but there's a steep hill that comes down around a curve right to a crosswalk. And cars are now, with more traffic, having a hard time even turning out of Ryan Road. And kids are walking to the convenience store from the heights and other areas. There's sidewalks, and they can't get across the streets. What I'm asking for is if the mayor and possibly the city council, I don't know what, how you could do this. Last year, $200,000 was budgeted, and I don't know what happened with that money, whether the governor let it out, which I don't think he did, for this intersection. Now, there's another $75,000 in the budget, and it does say, "For the Florence Road Dangerous Intersection." And I am just pleading if the mayor could advocate for the city to, that the governor doesn't scratch that from the budget, and that it gets released. So that's a total of $270,000, $75,000 in my mind that could be working to get that intersection made safe before a child is killed, before there's more accidents. A car has already hit a house, so it really needs to be done. The money's there. We need to plead to keep it there and have it in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Jasper Lapienzki, please.
Hello, my name is Jasper Lapienzki. I live at 226 South Street. I'm here tonight to talk about the change to council rules regarding suspension of Rule Three. For anyone who can hear me but doesn't know what Rule Three is, it's the rule that allows councilors to vote on whether to suspend or sidestep other rules that govern the manner in which the council conducts itself. Currently, any majority of members present may vote to suspend rules by invoking Rule Three. This change would require two-thirds of councilors to vote in favor. Whoop-de-ee-lah. Now, for the record, I'm always in favor of more accountability in government, and I have thoroughly enjoyed watching Councilor Dwight find more and more creative ways of improving how this body does business. And to Councilor Adams, thank you for your work on this. But this is purely symbolic. The council almost always votes to suspend rules when a suspension is proposed, and whenever it does, the vote is always unanimous. Even laying that aside, you recognize that we are discussing changing the threshold of failure from five councilors opposed to suspending rules to four councilors opposed to suspending rules. Even in the event that one councillor was opposed, I simply don't see a scenario unfolding in which the body as a whole would snub that one councillor and suspend the rules anyway. This amendment is good policy, but it will have no effect whatsoever on the suspension of council rules in the future. It does serve, however, as the perfect platform for me to speak to a pet peeve of mine regarding the usage of suspension of rules privileges by the council, and that is when the act of suspending the rules violates the spirit of the rule that is being suspended. For instance, second readings. The intent behind having two readings, required for all orders, ordinances, financial orders, so on, is to permit the public to weigh in on a consequential topic after an official vote has been cast and councilors are squarely on the record. A motion to expedite the process by having both readings on the same night bypasses this safeguard completely. Likewise, the motion to waive reading. Again, for those who don't know what this means, the council president is required to read aloud in full orders, ordinances, and so forth. The purpose of this is to increase accountability among cable-access viewership. Waiving the reading is certainly efficient, but it violates the principle behind the rule. In particular, waiving the reading on second reading? I shut my mouth during the stormwater ordinance for Bill's mental health, but in general, the phrase "two readings" ought to pan out to more than a hopeful metaphor. I could make a fairly good case for why these two rules are cumbersome and unfair to councilors, as well as for why the public does not utilize this accountability in any meaningful way. Perhaps it is time to address these rules head-on and modernize them once and for all. In the meantime, however, I would request that you hereby cease to invoke your privilege to suspend any council rules for your own convenience when that convenience violates the spirit of the rules you are suspending, regardless of the size of the majority required to do so.
Thank you. Right on the money, Jasper. Thank you. George Brennan, please.
Hi, I'm George Brennan. I live in a tent. I hang out on the parks most of the time, Flatshe Park, you'll find me. The drugs down there are unbelievable. Nothing that's been done about them. The police officers are turning in the back. Mary Ann told me she could not do anything about it because it's a federal law. I could go down to Walter Sabo, bust these apartments, they're there. I don't know what she did. She rode by me and gave me one of these. Good going, George, red on the button. Right? What did that mean? I had no idea. Talk to me. You know? We gotta do something about these kids that are dying. When drugs go out, when your kids grow up, they're gonna be shooting themselves with drugs, happy. They're gonna say, "Northampton did it for us." You people are really happy, aren't you? The kids are dying out here, and there are tons. Walter Sabo had nine to 10 overdoses this year. A kid walking off the balcony, showing his girlfriend how he walked the balcony, fell off on his head. Loaded with drugs. Ain't that nice? I'd love it. No? Why not just take all our kids and say, "There you go, we'll set you up for one, two, three years," shooting drugs, right? City Hall. I walked down there the other day, and there's three people in their shaving, in their underwear. I said, "Ain't this nice? What are you guys doing here?" "We're shaving. We have no place to go." What does it take to shut down these two people? What is it take to shut down the City Hall? If it's got to be shut down, let's shut it down. They have a bus, they call it the Hoyoke Run Bus. Cocaine. They shoot up in the bus, they throw their needles out the window, the bus drivers are turning in the back. They don't want no part of this. Can you blame them? I talked with the bus drivers on there, they're two weeks on and two weeks off. No one would take it any longer. I laid, took her clothes off, and decided to walk up and down the bus aisle, no clothes on. The bus driver then stopped, he just kept on going like he was dead. Hey, this is fun. When are we gonna learn to protect our kids? Right? Tell me. It's not for us to do this, not, not, I'm saying, me, you, the rest of us. We see something before that. Go to the police and say, "Look, this is this." Why not? I've had two threatening calls. I'm being a victim of my apartment right now because I told a person, "I'm gonna go back to my tent." I don't want this, Carter. I don't need it. I can sleep in the tent just as well as I can anywhere else. I'm 66 years old. I don't deserve this. Do you? I hope so. I hope you people will join me in fighting for the druggies in this town. A guy from Texas turned around and said to me, "I heard this is the best place in the world to get money and get food." I know, I know, I just, one more second, I, "And this is the best place to get food, money, and drugs." I said, "Where?" "Northampton. That's why we're up here." Four people from Texas. Nice, huh? Now they're coming from Texas to join us. What else can we do, folks? This is your fault.
Thank you very much, George. I appreciate it. That's all we have signed up, but if anyone else is interested in speaking right now, you're welcome to. Speak now, or at least hold your peace for the remainder of the meeting. All right, thank you very much. I'm gonna ask the secretary to please call the roll.
Councilor Adams?
Here.
Councilor Carney?
Present.
Councilor Dwight?
Here.
Councilor Klein?
Present.
Councilor LaBarge?
Present.
Councilor Murphy?
Here.
Councilor O'Donnell?
Here.
Councilor Sierra?
Here.
Councilor Specter?
Here.
Excellent. Oh, okay. My computer died for just a brief second, so we're back on, we're back on track. There are no public hearings scheduled for today. Next up would be, as you can see, the mayor and the finance director are passing out thick documents. These documents are the mayor's proposed 2015 budget. Your honor, and you brought a poster, too.
For later.
Oh, poster for later? Okay. All right. Yeah, we don't want to pigpaw. Exactly.
The floor is yours, Your Honor.
Thank you.
So, good evening, members of the city council. As is required in the charter, I'm going to now read to you my budget message as part of my submission of the FY 2015 budget. To the honorable members of the city council, I submit for your consideration and approval my proposed $103,925,827 fiscal year 2015 budget for the city of Northampton in accordance with Section 7-3 of our charter. This budget is comprised of an $85,797,556 general fund, together with enterprise funds for water, $8,811,826, sewer, $6,238,128, solid waste, $1,098,261, and stormwater, $1,980,056. This budget also includes a capital improvements budget outlining 46 projects at a total cost of $8,940,739 that, for the first time, includes both general fund and enterprise fund projects. This budget message stands in stark contrast to the one I delivered almost a year ago today, when our city was facing a $1.4 million budget gap and the potential elimination of staff and services in city departments and in our schools. On June 25, 2013, the voters of Northampton approved a $2.5 million override as part of a multi-year fiscal stability plan designed to help us preserve vital services in FY 2014, as well as the next three fiscal years. The budget before you constitutes the second year of our plan, and I am proud to report that we have made significant progress in stabilizing and strengthening our city's fiscal position. We are rebuilding our depleted reserves. We are making much-needed investments in our infrastructure, including our deteriorating streets and critical stormwater and flood control systems. We are realizing significant economic development and tax-based growth. We have settled 13 of 14 collective bargaining agreements with city and school unions for FY 2015 and FY 2016. We have broken the pernicious cycle of annual cuts in our schools and the resulting emotional toll on staff and families. We are implementing a new volunteer property tax work-off program to provide tax relief for seniors and veterans. And in March, Standard and Poor's raised our bond rating as a city to AA+ affirming that our steady work and sound fiscal policies are moving the city forward in a positive direction. My proposed general fund budget represents a 2.2% increase from fiscal year 2014. Because we settled many of our collective bargaining units after the FY 2014 budget was adopted, a significant portion of increases reflected in departmental budgets include both FY 2014 and 2015 salary increases that are in the FY 2015 budget. The general fund also reflects significant changes driven by the historic creation of a new stormwater enterprise fund earlier this year. Many budget categories, particularly within the Department of Public Works, have been realigned to properly reflect salaries and benefits, operations and maintenance costs, and charges and fees associated with operating this new public utility. We have also reviewed and revised our formulas for indirect charges associated with all of our enterprise funds, and this budget includes a new section detailing that methodology. The five largest areas of increase in the FY 2015 general fund budget are: schools. The Northampton Public Schools budget will increase $856,378, resulting in no cuts in staff or services for the first time in several years. NPS will also be able to fund positions to meet new state mandates while addressing reading and math challenges and technology needs at the elementary level. A significant increase of $724,088 for Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School is primarily related to an increase in state-recommended out-of-district tuition, allowing for the expansion of vocational programs, staff, and athletics. Number two, fire rescue. The Northampton Fire Rescue Department will see an increase of $362,981, reflecting the inclusion of retroactive salary increases for FY 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2014, together with FY 2015 increases negotiated as part of an historic six-year contract settlement reached with our firefighters last summer. The third area of increase, retirement. The city's assessment for the Northampton Retirement Board will increase $166,657 to meet the actuarial obligations for our current and future retirees and allow us to fully fund our system by 2036. This budget also funds $100,000 to establish an other post-employee benefits, or OPEB, trust fund to plan for the long-term funding of retiree benefits other than pensions, which primarily means health insurance. While we fully fund OPEB on a pay-as-you-go basis, bond-rating agencies are now placing greater focus on unfunded OPEB liability as a financial management measure, and we believe building this into our budgeting is a prudent step. Number four, DPW Parks and Recreation. Our nearly completed new Florence Fields recreational facility, paid for through a combination of CPA funding and state grants, will require an increase of $150,549 in the DPW Parks and Recreation budget to pay for additional staff and equipment needed to maintain this expansion of the city's playing field inventory. This increase also reflects our commitment to implementing organic turf management at Florence Fields that can serve as a pilot for potential future management of all of our recreation fields. Number five, charter school tuition. Tuition for Northampton students who attend area charter schools will increase $114,911 in FY 2015. This reflects a 5.2% increase in an expense line that now tops out at over $2.3 million. While outgoing tuition will be offset by a state charter school reimbursement of $392,975, the governor and state legislature have failed to fully fund charter school reimbursements in recent years, shortchanging Northampton $106,777 in FY 2014 and a projected $139,940 in FY 2015. Northampton's overall net increase in state aid for its FY 2015 budget, net increase, is just 0.23%, or $22,258. This falls short of even our most conservative state aid estimates, and is particularly disappointing given that state revenues are projected to increase by 4.9% in FY 2015. In February, I joined city and town leaders from around the state to testify at a joint House/Senate Ways and Means Committee hearing, seeking an increase in state funding for these critical municipal and school aid accounts. While House and Senate budget writers did increase unrestricted general government aid, UGA, above Governor Patrick's proposed level funding of that account, our increase in Chapter 70 school aid remained at the governor's $25 per student level. This insufficient increase in school funding and the outdated Chapter 70 formula that underlies it continues to challenge Northampton's ability to meet the rising costs of educating our children, costs that are largely attributable to state and federal mandates. In FY 2002, state aid represented 30% of our general fund budget revenues. Prior to the national recession in FY 2009, state aid had slipped to 25% of our general fund budget revenues. In the general fund budget before you, state aid now comprises only 19% of our revenues. This continuing erosion in state aid, coupled with increases in state charges to Northampton for charter school and school choice students, is one of the largest single factors affecting our revenue picture. Massachusetts cities and towns are now more reliant on regressive property taxes to fund services than at any time in the last 30 years. It is critical that we press state government for a larger share of state revenues and more local revenue authority. This November's election of a new governor after eight years is a pivotal one for our Commonwealth, and I urge all citizens to be engaged in the fall campaign to ensure that all candidates commit themselves to investing in local municipalities and schools. Last year, I presented the city council and the residents of Northampton with a fiscal stability plan to conserve a significant portion of the new tax revenue created by the passage of a $2.5 million general override to sustain us in future years. That original plan charted a reasonable growth course for revenues and expenditures, allowing us to maintain and invest in city and school services by building up a new fiscal sustainability stabilization fund in FY 2014, 2015, and 2016, and then drawing from that fund in FY 2017 to balance our budget. I made it clear that this plan could give us four years before we would once again be facing a budget shortfall in FY 2018, necessitating cuts in services and personnel or the prospect of another override. I also promised the city council and taxpayers that we would revisit the plan each year to measure our progress and would work hard every day in between to stretch revenues further in order to forestall the prospect of another override. One of the most significant and exciting features of the FY 2015 budget I am submitting today is that it will allow us to extend Northampton's fiscal stability plan by an additional two years to FY 2020. I'm gonna say that again. It will allow us to extend Northampton's fiscal stability plan by an additional two years to FY 2020. We have been able to achieve this by lowering our expenditures in both the current and out-years, revising revenue estimates based on updated historical data, and investing additional revenues in the fiscal stability stabilization fund to create a longer, more sustained glide path. My updated general fund fiscal stability plan that is attached to this budget message now calls for budgeting a larger portion of our revenues in the fiscal stability stabilization fund in FY 2015, 2016, and 2017, and drawing them down over FY 2018 and 2019 to maintain city and school services and balance our budgets. Once again, full disclosure, in FY 2020, we will deplete the fiscal stability stabilization fund and will face a budget shortfall. There are two positive aspects to this updated scenario, however. We will be facing a smaller budget gap in FY 2020 than projected in the original plan, and by then, we will have paid off three of the city's four debt-exclusion override capital projects that are currently part of our tax rate. While I am pleased at the financial gains that this FY 2015 budget represents, please know that I will continue working every day to further prolong this period of fiscal stability and positive forward progress for our community. In closing, I want to thank our city department heads for working with me to develop their individual budgets that comprise the many parts of this overall budget. I want to thank Finance Director Susan Wright for her tireless work on this budget and for her help every day managing our city's finances so prudently and expertly. Thank you as well to my Chief of Staff Lynn Simmons, who began compiling and editing the budget prior to her maternity leave and has continued assisting with its formatting and assembly in the final weeks leading up to its submission. I also want to say a special word of thanks to a recently retired member of my staff, Karine Filippides. Karine played a role in the creation of over 20 city budgets during her distinguished tenure in the mayor's office, and we acknowledge her role in this one and take this opportunity to thank her again for her service to Northampton. I look forward to working with the city council over the next several weeks to answer any questions about this budget or provide additional information it may need. Copies of budget documents are available for residents to review at our two libraries and at City Hall, as well as electronically on the city of Northampton website at www.northamptonma.gov. Respectfully submitted, David J. Narcoits, Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. A few things, there will be, this is actually gonna come up in finance, of course, and we were also, at some point, scheduled hearings for councilors. If councilors ahead of time can think of what departments they want to review and consider and have come speak before us and present, and just submit that to either Pam or myself, and we'll try and schedule those meetings so we'll have a sense of, usually it's about two to three special meetings, and those are open to public. And the public, if they have any questions or concerns about the budget, please And the public, if they have any questions or concerns about the budget, please forward them to us, and we'll try and represent those in the, in those hearings. Your Honor, I don't know if you want to speak more on this now, or you prefer to wait till Finance? I know that you have some proclamations and there's other items, and there are people who are sitting here, and I'll bet you 50 cents not one of them is here to hear the budget, but I don't know how you would like to proceed.
Not really, I mean, just, I mean, the budget is laid out in the same format that we've done in the past. We continue to try to tweak it. You know, we've tabbed it, and again, this is all, it's actually available right now on the city's website, so people can go to it and get it in a PDF format. Again, we've got it broken down into revenue expenditures, all the general fund budgets, got the enterprise funds, those indirect charge summaries that I talked about are in there. For folks who want to understand those, we've got the two school budgets, and then all the other debt schedules, and then we've got the capital budget orders, the capital plan, the capital budget orders, and we've got all the operating orders that you will eventually vote on as part of approving this budget. So it's all in there, the budget message is in there, and we've got lots of charts and historical data for people to look at as well, so they can see how this budget compares to last, to last year and to previous years' budgets. And again, I'm ready to hear at hearings or answer questions that people have.
Well, two of the highlights in your budget message are significant to note, at least two, but the biggest being your, your projection all the way to 2020 with the, with the confidence that you believe that we can present, if everything, barring any catastrophe, that we can, we can run business as usual in the city.
Well, again, it's a projection, and we have to keep updating it, but we believe that, that this is good news, and the fact that we can now extend that plan an additional two years. So that large piece of cardboard I was carrying around for months
Paid off.
Still hangs in my office. We're now revising that, and we use that other one every day as a guide, and we'll continue to use this as a guide in all the decisions we make.
Can you, that projection, can you reconcile that with the other trend, the other important point that you made, was the diminishing obligations or commitments from the state? State and the federal government, of course, continue with mandates requiring us to do certain things, particularly relative to education, do not fund them, and that their obligation has been reduced almost by half from the traditional amount that we were used to receiving? If that trend continues, how does that figure into your calculus?
Well, that's, well, we've adjusted our, I think I said in the message that we were, you know, that the state aid exceeded our dismal projections for it. I think we had projected like .73%, that was our, and it came in at .23%. So, you know, we're pretty much, I think at this point, reaching the point where the state aid is almost becoming, you know, it was 19.8% last year, now it's 19%. You know, again, I think we're going to continue to work with our partners in other cities and towns to really press the message that we, you know, if you want to talk in Boston about lowering people's property taxes around the state, there's a really easy way to do it, which is to give us back more of our income tax dollars and other tax dollars, which will take some of this pressure off of local cities and towns who are now, as I said in the message, more reliant on the property tax than they've ever been in 30 years. So, so that's going to be a continued issue that we're going to have to work on, and then also, you know, looking for other local revenue sources as well, which we continue to try to explore. But this gives us more time to continue working on that. Again, we'll have a new governor, and so, so, you know, those are some of the factors.
Any other councilors want to counsel the bar?
Mayor, I'd like to thank you, and especially to Susan Wright, Lynn Simmons, and especially Corinne. I mean, every year, this budget book gets better and better, and there's, you work tirelessly on showing the taxpayers in the city of Northampton and all of us councilors of where and how the money is being spent. And I want to thank you very much for such a great job that is done on this budget book.
Thank you, Councilor.
Counselor Speckler.
Yeah, I wasn't sure whether we were going to wait until after Finance or...
If you had comments, I think, more grittier questions?
Grittier questions. Wait till after Finance, so that...
Anything have any amorphous, less gritty, more touchy-feely kind of things to say? No? We're really falling down on our touchy-feely here, and I think we've got to pick it up here as the council goes, if we've, we've got a reputation to uphold. Your Honor, then, you still have the floor and some other documents to present.
Yes, thank you very much. I do have some additional communications. I have a proclamation, which I'm going to read, and then we'll have some other comments. This is a proclamation entitled "National Public Works Week, May 18th through the 24th, 2014. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs, such as water, sewer, streets, stormwater, parks, and solid waste, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the year 2014 marks the 54th annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, now therefore I, Mayor David Jane Arkowitz, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through the 24th to be National Public Works Week in the city of Northampton. I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and imprinted the seal of the city of Northampton this 15th day of May in the year 2014, David Jane Arkowitz, Mayor." And we have with us the city engineer, although we have a lot of...
Yeah, we have, we have a good chunk of the DPW.
We have the city engineer, Mr. Lorilla. I also want to recognize Dave Valetta, who's also our, our senior engineer. Then we have this guy who I've never seen in a suit before.
It shocked me, too.
Rich Parsaletti, who's our street superintendent. He's looking very dapper, Mr. Parsaletti. And so I want to formally present this to you on behalf of the city, to the Department of Public Works. And also have you note that we are displaying this evening the annual National Public Works Week poster, which is in City Hall and at the DPW, which we brought tonight. So, I'll turn the floor over to...
Got a nice bench, huh?
Mr. Lorilla.
Thank you, Mayor. What a lovely poster. Nice this year. Thank you. I'm Jim Lorilla, the city engineer, as most of you, most of you are aware. I just wanted to say a couple of words this evening. Thank you so much for the proclamation. May 18th through 24th is, in fact, the celebration of National Public Works Week, and the men, the men and women who provide and maintain the essential public infrastructure for the city of Northampton. So, as the mayor had mentioned, roads, sidewalks, solid waste, parks and recreational fields, cemeteries, drinking water, wastewater management, stormwater and flood control systems are all parts of things that we take care of for the city every day. This award has been, or proclamation has been something that's been, it's the 54th year, as the mayor had mentioned, since 1960. It's been an important part of educating the public about public works, things that public works departments do every, every day for communities. I know that the city council is quite familiar with public works. We get routine messages from, from the councilors, whether it's a detailed list from Mary Ann LaBarge about the potholes in her, which appreciate the, the skill and detail in those, those emails to us, or Councilor Murphy thanking me for the high-quality drinking water he was enjoying earlier this week. Appreciate that. And I think what I wanted to say today a little bit is, is to just drill down a little bit about, it's all about me today. Ned asked me to come tonight, so I wanted to talk a little bit about why I love my job, and I think it's reflective of public works in this city as a whole. As the city engineer, you would probably expect that I would say that I love my job because of the variety of technical challenges and the different things we get to work on, which is true, but I think the reason I like my job the most is the inspiration that I receive daily from the people that work within the department. I look at the pride and the care that all the employees have and the work that they do, and that's really inspirational for me in the work that I do, and able to, to take a look at that dedication. And I think people should be aware of how hard people work on behalf of the city, day in and day out, and the difficult things that we do to take care of public infrastructure. And I think that's really what the week is about, is, is taking time to acknowledge the hard work of, of city staff that take care of this infrastructure for us. I just, I don't, I guess I can say this, I wasn't drinking, but I just left a party at JJ's Tavern for a retirement party for John Carver, who some of you may know as the chief wastewater treatment plant operator. John's been an employee for 36 years for the city, and I think a lot of the skill and pride and hard work that people in public works have are really embodied in people like John. To the day of his retirement, he's still working as hard and has as much pride and caring as ever in the work that he's doing, and I think he's a really good example of the types of employees that we have in the department. And the mayor, as usual, beat me to the punch. I was going to acknowledge the skill and dedication of David Valetta, he's already been acknowledged, and Rich Parsaletti, and I do appreciate them following me this evening to provide the support I need to get up here and speak publicly. Thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you, thank you. I, you know, I've said it over and over, the guys who show up in the orange lights and the orange shirts don't get anywhere near the respect and regard that, say, people in blue shirts or blue lights or the firefighters show, when they show up. Yet, the, I would say 90% of the calls that we take are more related to DPW-type of issues than any other thing, and it's, it is, and as we talk about the diminishing attention nationwide of, and deferred maintenance on, on infrastructure, you guys constantly struggle to do more with less, and, you know, I think Councilor LaBarge's pothole summary is, is a perfect reflection of that manifestation of the, the federal and state. Again, Chapter 90 funds have also been reduced along with Chapter, along with school funding as well. So, you know, you have my undying admiration, and I think you guys have performed your job with, with grace and courtesy and efficiency and effectiveness, and, you know, I'm glad that we have put aside this little brief period to acknowledge that, but I, I hope you know going forward that that lasts year-round. So, I thank you very much for your work.
I appreciate that. I'm glad I walked into the touchy-feely session. It worked out well.
Okay, hugs. Thank you. Your Honor, you have any more proclamations or no such things? Next up, we have, let's go to the paper version. I believe we're at the one-minute announcement, I think. But, oh, no, I'm sorry, we have the resolution, the announcement of the, okay, I'm sorry. We have the announcement of the 2014, excuse me, living wage adjustment. I know Natalia's, it says Natalia Munoz here, but I see Kitty Callahan. So, do you want to, Kitty, do you want to come and speak to that?
Sure, I do.
I figure you're, you're as qualified as anybody, you know.
Yeah, I, I think that Natalia did not think that she would be speaking here tonight.
Right, she just put her name next to it and let you do it, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, in 2014, the living wage rate will go from $12.78 an hour to $12.97 an hour, representing a very, a small increase in the Consumer Price Index of 1.5%. However, looking at the data from the Consumer Price Index, that, there was an increase in some, some basic needs this year, 2.9% for rent, 3.2% for electricity, and 2.5% in medical care services. So, it's important that every year that we're, we're raising the living wage so that low-wage workers do not have to, you know, be the brunt of the impact of these increases. So, we're grateful that, that the city council is, is doing its job in announcing, announcing every year the, the increase in, in the, in the, in the living wage rate. We are also, this year, we're supporting the ballot question and the legislation to raise the minimum wage, and that also raised up Massachusetts, which wrote the legislation, put in there an increase, an automatic increase after it reaches the top tier in January of 2016. Every year, it's going to go up based on changes in the Consumer Price Index. And we decided to support this because we have to take the politics out of changing the minimum wage. We haven't had a minimum wage change for five years, so people are making $8 an hour and not making ends meet. And one of the things that we did, instead of celebrating Living Wage Week, we had a minimum wage forum and brought together Peter Kocut and some legislative aides to, to bring support in the, in the House for, for the bill, and, and we were very happy to hear that everybody was in support of the, the proposal by Raise Up Massachusetts. I, I also want to very briefly announce that this, in the next month, we are going to be expanding our campaign to other communities in, in Western Mass, and we have, we have developed a, a living wage based on Spring, on the cost of living in Springfield, which we're going, which is lower, of course, than Northampton because the costs of housing are lower, and that rate is going to be $11.98 an hour. Amherst, we're going to give special attention to because those housing rates are much higher than North, than Northampton, and so we have to calculate a, a different living wage rate for, for Amherst. But Northampton will no longer be the only community in Western Mass with a living wage campaign, and, you know, we're excited about launching this, this new effort.
That's, I, I appreciate you pointing that out, that, I mean, I, we, we were alone in the woods for quite a while there as Northampton. The reason that Kitty presents this annually is that actually, Northampton council voted, and I would like to pick the date, and I can't even remember, I think it was my first round as a counselor, to...
1998.
98.
Yes.
My God, that's my, yeah, okay. It was a long time ago. In 1998, establish and have a declaration of what it would, what it would cost someone to continue to sustain themselves with life and dignity here in the community, and, and it was an expression of commitment by the council then, and it's, and it, I believe it stands, and I, and I'm very grateful that you've taken the time today to come and explain that to us, and I'm glad that Amherst has decided to join us, as has Springfield.
Well, they haven't decided yet.
I'm glad that Amherst is considering it, and, and if they want to play catch-up, we'll, we'd be glad to.
We're actually not going to do the resolution route because it would, it would be very difficult to, to cover each, have a resolution, each town and community and city in Western Mass. We're going to launch our campaign, have, have people come to our website, target different employers, and through word of mouth, get the word out to different communities that, you know, that this is there for you so that your workers can, can earn a living wage.
Well, thank you again for your efforts in that respect, and then, and I enjoy our, our singular status thing.
Yes. You will be the first, always.
Councilor Donald. I'd just like to say also thank you.
You're welcome.
And when you look at a figure of $12.97...
Yes.
And, and you realize that's, that's the amount that a single person without children needs.
Right.
To meet basic necessities like energy and housing and...
Yep, right.
And so it just, and it puts a finer point on, on the shame we should feel of how hard it is to raise the minimum wage to $10. And so it just makes the work you do all the more important.
Right, yeah, and it's a, it's a bare-bones budget.
Right.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kitty, thank you. Next up, and we have the, the resolution opposing the northeast expansion of the Tennessee Gas Pipeline in Massachusetts, which is showing up at this point, and I would invite Councilor Donald to introduce.
I'd be happy to, thank you. Should I read it or just provide?
Would you please, yes?
Sure, of course. This is a resolution opposing the northeast expansion of the Tennessee Gas...
This is a resolution opposing the northeast expansion of the Tennessee Gas Pipeline in Massachusetts. And it reads, "Whereas the so-called northeast expansion of the Tennessee Gas Pipeline is a high-pressure natural gas pipeline," thereafter simply the pipeline, "proposed by Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company, a subsidiary of Kinder Morgan, Inc., that would run through many communities in western Massachusetts. And whereas the city of Northampton has a regional interest in protecting the environment in the Pioneer Valley and in the United States and the public health generally. And whereas the pipeline would transport natural gas obtained through hydraulic fracturing, a drilling method well-known for its potential for groundwater contamination, impact on air quality, and the harmful health effects of its chemical byproducts, among others. And whereas pipelines of this kind carry inherent risks, such as leaks and ruptures, and as conveyors of flammable gas can cause accidents, such as the 2010 explosion in a residential neighborhood in San Bruno, California, that resulted in the death of eight people and the destruction of 38 homes. And whereas the pipeline may pass through environmentally sensitive areas in our region, such as forests and wetlands, as well as beneath the Connecticut River. And whereas taxpayer money would pay for evacuations and emergency response in the event of explosions, fires, or other accidents. And whereas our energy challenges are better addressed through investments in green and renewable energy solutions. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Northampton, Massachusetts, first stands in opposition to the northeast expansion of the Tennessee Gas Pipeline and all similar projects that may be later proposed. Second, stands in solidarity with nearby communities working to disallow the pipeline within their borders. Third, affirms the need for public policy at the local, state, and federal levels to encourage renewable energy and combat climate change, and supports legislation to ban or impose a long-term moratorium on hydraulic fracturing, as well as the storage, treatment, or disposal of hydraulic fracturing fluids or byproducts within the Commonwealth. And finally, shall cause a copy of this resolution to be presented to the state of Northampton's legislative representatives and the governor, asking them to take action to prevent the construction of the pipeline within the borders of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts."
Oh, accept the motion.
Second.
Well.
So moved, so moved.
There you go. And Counselor Carney seconded them. Do you want to speak more to this, or?
I think it lays it out pretty clearly. I think the value here is, this is a regional issue, and even though a resolution doesn't have the force of law, we're really faced with a political challenge in terms of dealing with this issue that will ultimately affect everyone in the Pioneer Valley. So, that will be the value of joining. At this point, I count 11 other towns in the region that have passed similar resolutions in opposing this, not just because it's the right thing to do, but because, in this case, it's the only thing to do, I think, at this stage.
Counselor Specter and Counselor LeBarge.
I want to thank my colleague for bringing this forward, especially at this time. I think also the proclamation covers just about all the areas. I just want to speak to one of them. And this was brought up by Chris Mason in our last Energy Commission meeting. This is a pipeline with bringing gas that we don't need and that we won't use, and that will actually could undermine the attempts in this region, which have been pretty successful, to lower our carbon footprint through renewables and through things like the stretch code, which we supported in terms of energy efficiency. You know, it's interesting that it's kind of like, jokes come to mind, but this isn't that funny, like, what the frack were they thinking, and are their heads in the tar sands? But really, in the last six weeks, we've had four different reports come out about climate change. On a national level, it's so discouraging because nothing has been done. I think the first bill on climate change was 18 years ago, and it actually had more support from Republicans than it would today. There was really a coalition of both parties, and it's extraordinarily disappointing, to say the least, that nothing's going to be done at a federal level. And in fact, what's going to have to happen, and most people are saying this, it's going to have to happen at the very local level. It's not going to happen at a national level anytime in the foreseeable future. We've seen a UN report that basically talks about the future and what's going to happen. That came out about six weeks ago, that I think shook most of us when we read that. Then the U.S. Science Panel came out with a report, I think it was about three weeks ago, the White House report, saying, this isn't in the future anymore, guys, this is happening now. Then we had a report, I think it was just two or three days ago, by the U.S. military. This is not a, you know, progressive group, the U.S. military, but they're a hard-nosed group that looked at this and say, climate change is affecting how we should look at the world now, and that it's going to be a very dramatic change that the military have better take into account because of all the displacement. And then just today, I saw a report by another non-progressive group, the Insurance Institute. The Insurance Institute's saying, because these folks are gamblers, basically, they're gamblers who control the house and the odds, and they're saying, climate change is real to them, and the cost for crop insurance and flood insurance is going to grow up so dramatically for them to be able to offer that, that they may not offer those anymore. So, all these things are happening. Meanwhile, Rome burns while all the Nero's in Washington play the fiddle. And so, there's not a lot we can do, but anything we can do, we should do. You might have seen in the paper today that this town, that Northampton, is the first of the five-star communities, which is really about energy efficiency and renewables. And in this region, especially in Massachusetts, if the rest of the country had done what Massachusetts had done, there'd be a dramatic decrease in our carbon output. So, this region has been a leader, not just in Massachusetts, but in New England as a whole. What Chris Mason pointed out was that, in the study by Kinder Morgan itself on this pipeline, so the way they sell the pipeline's two ways. One, they sell it by talking about natural gas, which for years, and I bought into this too, natural gas, it's cleaner than, a lot cleaner than coal, it's better than oil. Well, fracked gas is not. So, that was one thing, that was one way to sell, but still, you could say, well, it's still natural gas. I kind of like natural gas. The second reason they talk about it being important is it's going to provide important new energy source for this region. And in their own study, it says that if this region continues on its path of conservation of renewables, we don't need this gas. That's their study. So, this is gas we don't need, done with a process we don't approve of. And so, I really support this. And one of the few ways we're going to do this, and we do have an election coming up, governors and other people, the folks who are going to decide on this are going to be local communities, it's going to be our legislature, and I think this is one of those cases where these 11 communities, and we'll be the 12th, and there'll be others, are sending a strong message, and we need to do that, saying, hey, if you guys support this, we won't be supporting you come November.
Counselor LeBarge.
I'm going to support this resolution 100%. Even though it's not going to affect our city of Northampton, we have many other cities or communities that have had resolutions in opposing the Tennessee Gas Pipeline coming through. I find that it really opposes a great danger, no matter where it's going to be placed. And we also need to look at people's private property. That's another big issue, of how much land would actually be taken by this company to private owners. I also feel the environment, which I really support protecting our environment, and the fracking, the procedures on it, I've been checking this out, and I have great concerns of the damage that it can do for people's health, for anything, the water, protecting our water. I think this is the right way to go.
I should note that the Energy Commission voted unanimously to support this resolution. Also, the reason this comes about is the New England governments have combined to try and figure out the best way to do carbon offsets and to reduce our carbon generation. And this was being offered as one of the alternatives, the fracked gas.
It's an excellent article.
The argument goes that would reduce our dependency on coal production, coal-fired plants, which are clearly, have been clearly indicted for their contribution to the carbon input into the atmosphere. And as Counselor Specter pointed out, in fact, that's a zero-sum game, even by the proponents' own study. So, in fact, actually, we're going to benefit much more by doing what we are doing. The fact that we are, we won, you didn't brag on this enough, and Northampton is actually in a nationwide standard called the star rating, similar to the way you get star ratings for your refrigerator. They decided to apply that to communities. Of every community and every town so far in this country, only one has received five stars, only one city in the entire country, the first. You're sitting in it. This is Northampton. And we, and we get to brag on that. We will always be the first. We will be the baseline. We are the standard by which all the other communities, San Francisco, Chicago, New York City, Cal, any other community in the state are going to be measured by. It only makes sense that if we stand in opposition of this pipeline for a variety of reasons, and in point of fact, it does affect us, because as Counselor O'Donnell points out in the language of this, this is a regional issue. We will be, we will incur no benefits, but all the liabilities. You know, you don't have to go, you don't have to go too far back to look at the impact of the BP oil spill and oil explosion in the Derrick, and the effect that it had on the surrounding communities, and the people are paying for that. BP's paying for it to some degree, but for the most part, it's paid for daily with the people whose lives and livelihoods have been destroyed and the environmental impact. So, if the New England governors decide, and they still haven't decided whether they want to go with fracking gas, if they continue to proceed with it, truth be told, they get to trump resolutions. They get to trump everything that all these communities have voted on, to say, no, you can't come here. We can say it. The only way that you can stop it is by expressing, I think, upfront, loudly, clearly, succinctly, the opposition and the reason for the opposition for this, and I think this is very timely, I think it's appropriate at this point. And it's why, when invited, I was proud to co-sponsor this. So, any other discussion? Would you like a roll call vote on this, or would you like a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
I will abstain.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Specter.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
The resolution passes. Next up, an announcement of a public hearing, and that's scheduled for Thursday, June 5, 24th, 7:05 PM, and that will be regarding the mayor's budget, the 2015 budget, and that will convene here in council chambers. One-minute announcement is the one thing I keep forgetting every time. Counselor Shara.
For Ward 4 people, I'm having a coffee on, a week from tonight, so next Thursday at 7:30 at the Haymarket Cafe. Everyone's welcome, but particularly Ward 4 folks, if you want to come and meet up and talk, please do. So, 7:30, Haymarket.
Any other one-minute announcements? Counselor Klein.
Tuesday, May 20th, at 6 o'clock in Leeds, across from Leeds Village Apartment Building, the Leeds Civic Association and I will be sponsoring a community meeting on how to keep our green spaces clean, and there will be refreshments, and all residents of Ward 7, all residents of the city are welcome, but certainly the residents of Leeds.
And what else? Any other announcements? Okay. Thank you. And my apologies for passing that up, I think the last three meetings that I presided over, so. Next up, we have licenses and petitions, and we have a lot of them, and we have two applicants, I see. So, how does the council want to proceed with these?
May I ask just a question on these? Were all of them given, all of them been cleared by the appropriate channels, or any, should any be separated out from the group for any variety of reasons?
Though, the ones I read, I didn't see anything. The city clerk has said, I believe that everyone's up to speed on their taxes.
Yes.
And, yeah, actually, we have an insider in the clerk. Do you want to speak to these?
Give us the inside scoop here.
As a matter of protocol, we don't present to you anything that has an issue. So, everyone has been cleared through a permit denial form from the tax collector that the taxes are current. And regarding, if you want to discuss the taxis and whatnot, all of the appropriate paperwork is in place, including insurance, the need to have child seat.
Right, all of the various.
And that sort of thing. So, all of that stuff has been put into place.
So, I would recommend taking them as a group and discussing them as a group.
I would ask that you remove one item from the group, and that's feeding tube records, because I'll have to abstain.
I'm sorry, from what?
I have to abstain on one of these, feeding tube records.
Okay, so I would say we take them all as a group, except for that one and any other the council specifically.
The motion is all as a group with that one, exception of feeding tube records. Is there a second?
Second it.
Okay. Counselor LeBarge, do you have some comments?
I was just going to say that to take the one that you wanted out, which would leave us 14 that we're going to be approving out of the 15.
And I'm going to read them.
A question.
Sure.
Just about the process, then. So, excuse me, these all just come up at this time because it's in expiration? Is that the reason? Is there a date?
Usually, April, in April, their licenses become, have to be renewed.
Okay. So, that would mean, and pretty much that this is the universe of second-hand dealers that, in the city, we see before us.
And trucks and taxis.
Yeah, weekday bowling.
For this list.
Yeah, I believe that useless breakables in Rose River and Rain are probably the only two that are new on this list that you haven't seen before.
Right.
All of the others are.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm going to read for the record the applicants for the license. The license for second-hand dealers is Antiques Corner at Five Markets Street, Northampton. Back Alley Antiques and Collectibles at 238 Bridge Street. Stuart F. Solomon Antiques on 9 and 3/4 Market Street. Kid Stuff, 90 Maple Street. Edward T. Hardy at 9 Corticelli Street. Urban Exchange at 233 Main Street. Jack Spire at 416 North Main Street, Leeds. The Family Jewels at 56 Green Street. Feeding Tube Records at 90 King Street. Norman E. Menard on 25 Garfield Avenue. Rose River and Rain LLC at 22 Maplewood Shops. Useless Breakables, 376 Pleasant Street. NoHo House of Vintage at 11 Bridge Street, Unit C. Cancer Connection, 375 South Street. The Instrument Exchange at 13 King Street. And then licenses for junk dealers, that'd be Norman E. Menard at 25 Garfield Avenue. Richard and Sharon Huntley at 254 East Hampton Road. Licenses for truck and taxi, Bill Willard Incorporated at 1010 Ryan Road in Florence. Cosmic Cab, 78 Con Street, Number 4 Rear. And that's five taxis, by the way, I should say, yes, five trucks for Willards, five taxis for Cosmic Cab. Aaron's Paradise Transportation on 14 East Hampton Road, Northampton, that's nine taxis. Go Green Cab Company, 2 Con Street, Number 34, Northampton, that's three taxis. Funky Cab at 123 Holly Street, Northampton, with two taxis. And then weekday and Sunday bowling licenses, which is an artifact back when bowling was considered a sin. Northampton Bowl, 525 on Pleasant Street. And then weekday and Sunday license for pool tables, an even greater sin, at Packard's at 14 Masonic Street. So, with the exception of feeding tube records, the motion's been put on the floor. Is there any discussion on those items? None? This can be done by voice vote, so. All those of favor of approving these licenses, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Now for feeding tube records. Now for feeding tube records, I'll accept a motion, put that on the floor.
Seconded.
Any discussion on feeding tube records? Once again, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I abstain. Okay. So that, by the way, we just blew through the really daunting looking portion of the, the agenda. Oh, Priscilla's here. Where's, where's that? Fireworks? Fireworks, yeah. Yeah, we're up to fireworks, Priscilla, I'm sorry. I wasn't in this, it's not on my agenda here. I saw Priscilla sitting there, and I had a feeling she didn't come here just for the fun. I don't know. My apologies. It's not on my agenda, but it is on the reg, everyone else's agenda.
Sorry.
It's, it's what?
I couldn't read it from back there.
It's okay. So, actually, do, so this is for, the fireworks display permit for the family fourth committee. And here is the application, so you want to just explain what we already know, what you're about to explain, but please, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is the fourth year for the Northampton family fourth celebration. This year will be on June 28th. It's a celebration of our independence. It's at Look Park. We have music. We have food from local vendors. We have carnival games that the PTOs benefit from. The JFK band and chorus benefit from the parking. And then we end the night with an incredible display of fireworks by Atlas Pyrotechnics. So the city council has supported this in the past. Thank you very much. We couldn't do it without the support of the city, so.
Counselor LaBarge?
Thank you. So it's the same procedure that we're doing, where the fire department will be on site for the arrival and through the display.
And for the first light sweep the next day.
Counselor Adams?
Was the Gazette editorial helpful to your fundraising efforts?
Yes.
Good to know.
Yes. Thank you very much to the Gazette. They really jumped on it and a lot of new businesses, new donors have stepped up, so we're doing very well.
Well, it is an excellent event, goes without saying, so. And we're very grateful for that, for sure. Any other questions?
Just, oh, just, it's important to note, I think, for folks who might be concerned about this, as I was at the time, but all of, at least the resident animals that are at the park are removed during the fireworks display in order to prevent.
Those that would be more traumatized by the fireworks than removed.
Right.
Counselor Murphy? So I would move we grant the permit. There's a motion made to grant the permit. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you very much, Priscilla.
Thank you very much.
Forward to it. Okay. So, sorry about that oversight. Pam points out to me that I have the old agenda. Okay. Thank you. All right. So we'll go to this paper stuff. This, now, for the, we're, I'm sorry?
Approval of the minutes?
Yes. We're at the reports of committees and approval of minutes.
I'll move approval of the minutes of April 27th and May 1st.
Seconded.
Any discussion on the minutes? Counselor O'Donnell?
Minor correction.
Seventeenth.
On the 17th, the number of us present says, well, at the very top, it says eight counselors, and then under the roll calls, it just says nine parentheses eight. So maybe it was eight and a half or something.
I wasn't there, so I would be the absent counselor, so.
Six counselors.
Right. It's just a Scribner's error.
You've counted that's a half.
I can't, my, my shadow counted as some form of vote, though. With, with that Scribner's error adjusted, are there any other comments on the, on the minutes? All those in favor approving the two minutes, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We also have the committee reports for EDLU.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion on those? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And now we're up to appointments. And this is a new appointment, appointment to the council on aging, Margaret LaSalle, 11 Chestnut Street in Florence. The term starting April 2014 to expire April 2017 comes with a positive recommendation from ordinance. And then also Lorraine Wyman, 300 acre Brook Drive in Florence, a term to start April 2014 and expire April 2017, also with a positive recommendation from ordinance.
These two as a group?
This is a motion made.
Seconded.
Second. Any discussion on the applicants? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. New appointment to the planning board. This is Teresa Peron Poe, term to start March 2014 to expire March 2019, to replace Jennifer Derringer, whose term expired March 2014. This comes with a positive recommendation from ordinance.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the applicant?
She looks real good.
I just think she will be a great asset to the planning board.
Here. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then a new appointment, this is the Housing Partnership, Peter Frothingham. The term to begin May 2012 and expire May 2015. That's filling the unexpired term of Patty McGill, and this is to refer to ordinance.
To refer. Head second.
Motion made. Refer and seconded. All those in favor of referring to ordinance, please say aye.
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 Okay. And now, we come to recess for finance, where I figured we passed it, Counselor Murphy, and the mayor gets, the mayor and Susan get to pop up again and, and take us through the budget. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
And would you call the roll of finance?
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor LaBarge?
Present.
Counselor Shara?
Sure.
So, as Counselor Dwight indicated, the budget is the first thing on finance tonight, and we'll defer to the mayor at this point if he wants to add anything to his previous So with the mayor not having anything additional to add at this point, it is our tradition to refer the budget from finance to the entire council for the slated budget hearings that are set up by the council president. The budget's a very important thing to, to all the voters in Northampton and all the councilors who represent them, so I would ask a motion out of finance to refer this to the council as a whole for further scrutiny.
I make a motion to refer to our full city council.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Counselor Adams? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so the council president will set up our traditional budget examination.
Any other final?
Oh, there are. There's one on land taking and sewer.
Yeah. I see they're now hermetically sealed, so. Right. It's, you know.
So I don't write on them.
So you can eat jelly doughnuts and still preside.
If you got them. So this is upon the recommendation of the mayor, David J. Narcoits. Were that 330, 300, $332,370 be appropriated from the FY14 general fund, undesignated fund balance to the following accounts. $75,535 to snow and ice personal services overtime. $121,488,000, snow and ice OM vehicular supplies. $125,347,000, snow and ice OM snow removal supplies. And $10,000 to flood control personal services overtime. Mayor want to comment on this while we're discussing it?
No, this is just our, you know, winter's over, thank goodness. And so this is our transfer from free cash into our snow and ice budget. You may recall that you invoked our deficit spending capabilities early in the year, and so this now will fund all of those snow and ice accounts that we were deficit spending on until April, when we see snow, snow fighting operations. I can answer any questions about it, or, I also, I have a chart which I can give you if that's helpful. It's a chart that just gives you kind of our historical snow and ice expenditures, if that's, just gives you a sense and, you know, essentially that chart is about as predictable as the weather in terms of what we're going to spend each year. You can, you can see our 2014 number, 748, 720, and, and then you can see the fluctuations, you know, back 2011, obviously was, was, you know, an even worse winter. And that being the winter of the Halloween snowstorm and, and then the ensuing winter that followed after that. So, so that just gives you kind of a history of what our, what our spending has been for snow and ice. And this order will allow us to, to true up those accounts and take them out of deficit.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes. Mayor, at one point, I remember we had the snow insurance. Will we ever be looking to go back to that?
My sense of it is, is that we had, we did have snow insurance for a while, and, and I think a lot of cities had, and I think it was a good deal for a while. We were ahead of the game. For people at home, this was an insurance you could buy, and once you reached a certain snow level, you would get paid by the insurance company. As, as, after a few winters of a lot of payouts, they changed some of their metrics, and of course, they raised the cost of the policy. So the cost benefit analysis that was done by the DPW, and I think we've looked at, I don't know if, if Richard, do you want to comment on that, is that we really haven't, it hasn't been viable going forward. So that's, that's the status on that.
Any more questions in finance? Or from anyone? Do we have a motion for a positive recommendation?
Yes.
Second?
I make a motion.
Second? All right. All in favor in finance? Aye?
Aye.
And then the last one.
Two more.
Two more. Two more. This one is for, for DPW and upon their recommendation. Whereas the Department of Public Works desires to install a sewer line and related facilities from Industrial Drive to Bradford Street North, which will cross the land of David Short, and whereas David Short is willing to grant an easement to the city for the installation, maintenance, repair, and replacement of such sewer line, now therefore be ordered, the city council authorizes the acquisition by gift, purchase, eminent domain, or otherwise of two permanent easements on and under a portion of the land of David Short located off Industrial Drive, Northampton, Massachusetts, shown as proposed sewer easement A area of 22,290 square feet and proposed sewer easement B of 255 square feet on a plan entitled "Easement Plan for the City of Northampton, Hampshire County Prepared for the City of Northampton on April 14, 2014 by Northeast Survey Consultants for the Purpose of Maintaining, Repairing, and Replacing Sewer Pipes, Lines, and All Facilities Within the Easement Area and to Enter and Remain Upon the Easement Area by Foot and with Vehicles and Equipment for the Purpose of Maintaining and Repairing, Replacing Said Sewer Facilities and to Great As Necessary in Order to Maintain the Stability of the Easement Area and that No Further Appropriation is Necessary for the Acquisition of the Easement Authorized Hereunder." And then the remainder of the order is just the technical specifications of where the easement is and so forth. So we have a motion in finance?
I have a motion to send it to full city council.
Second?
Second.
All right. Anything else from the mayor on this one, or anyone from DPW? Mr. Laurel is here and recognized. Do you have anything to add on this one?
Just briefly, I wanted to say that Mr. Short has been quite accommodating in working with the Public Works Department as we seek to build a new sewer main that would run from the industrial park to the Bradford Street pump station. It's an important project for us, and we appreciate his willingness to work with us on the easement.
So, Jim, it's a new line being placed, and it's not a pre-existing, correct?
That's correct. Yep. That's right.
Counselor?
I was just wondering when, when you plan on doing that work?
Work's under design right now, and if the easement and the public way issues move forward, it could be later this summer.
No other questions? And do we, do we, we don't need Mr. Laurel to remain for, well, it's going to come up real quick again, but. He's got Bradford to discuss.
Yeah, he has one more.
Yeah. Which is this one, which is pretty much the same thing. So in finance, if there are no more questions, all in favor of positive recommendation?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then this is the easement. And this is Mr. Short. Aye, David Short, 12 Billings Road, Montague, Massachusetts. For consideration of $1 paid, granted to the inhabitants of the City of Northampton and municipal corporation, authorized under the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and municipal offices here at 210 Main Street, Northampton, Mass., with quick claim covenant. And it basically, if you would like me to read it, is the same as the taking. Do you want me to read it, or are we good with the technical specifications of the sizes of the easements?
No, that's fine. Do you ask?
So do we have a prob, positive recommendation for this? Finance, to send it forward?
Second.
Second? Okay. Any more discussion on this one, or any, anything from Mr. Laurel? Are we good on this? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ring none? Very good. And I think that is it. Correct? So a motion to adjourn finance?
Move to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we're reconvene, and we have a financial order, the financial order that just, on first reading.
Actually, well, that's not council. We have to do a roll call in council.
Right. The, this is the appropriate, to appropriate $332,370 from the FY14 general fund, undesignated fund balance, which is also free cash to snow and ice, PS, NOM, and flood control PS. And this is the first reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
This financial order is also in second reading. This is to appropriate $117,200 from the FY2014 general fund, undesignated fund balance, aka free cash, to the Academy of Music Fire Escape Prepare and Replacement Project.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counselor O'Donnell and then Counselor Shara. Any further discussion?
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Counselor Shera?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
That also passes in first reading, and second reading will be at the next scheduled council meeting. This financial order is of order for acquisition of a sewer easement over the land of David H. Short, and this is also first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shera?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shera?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shera?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
This financial order is also in second reading. This is to appropriate $117,200 from the FY 2014 general fund, undesignated fund balance, AKA free cash, to the Academy of Music Fire Escape Repair and Replacement Project.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counselor Powell, and then Counselor Shera. Any further discussion? Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shera?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
It is approved in second reading. Financial order here, appropriate $10,950 from receipts reserved for appropriation parking to garage structural repair program, project, I'm sorry, and this is second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? Okay, Pam. Counselor Shera?
Yes.
Second, sorry. Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
That's the hazards of...
I know.
Someone's going to lose an eye.
I hope it's not us.
The final item, also in second reading, is a financial order for the FY 2014 budgetary transfers of $197,318.
Move to approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor LaBarge, and second by Counselor Shera.
Skip one?
Yeah.
We skip one.
All right, we'll get back to it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That was like, yeah, the cover parking issue.
I think one through.
Yeah, yeah. Any discussion on this, though, on the budgetary?
No.
No discussion? Okay. Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shera?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shera?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
And then, the one I skipped, appropriation of $10,960 from receipts reserved for appropriation. This is the parking to cover parking enforcement and parking maintenance salaries, second.
Move to approve it.
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shera?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shera?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
By the way, I'd accept a motion for this on the floor.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Counselor Spector, you have a comment?
Yeah, just a comment, because this came up in public comment, that there's a reason why this rule is there, and it helps the council do its business more efficiently and effectively. It's not because, you know, to make it more convenient for the counselors. I actually think there's been an effort on this council, in the past council, past session, that whenever there's any question about a second reading, unless there's some, you know, some very good reason to have a second reading, I think we've really tried to say, let's put off a second reading, let's try and use that rule as little as possible. But, that said, I think there's a reason for it being there, which is it allows us, you know, people talk about how bulky government is, and how slow it is, and this is small, but it's a way of just allowing us to do our business. For example, to not have to read, do a second reading of two pages of material, but to summarize it in a second reading, and any counselor here, and this has happened at times, can call for a full second reading. But I think these are just ways that we can have a more efficient running of the council.
Counselor Murphy?
Nope.
I would just say, I can never recall an occasion where a counselor objected to us doubling up when we didn't acquiesce and say, all right, you want to do it that way, we'll do it that way.
Exactly.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes, I want to echo what Counselor Spector talked about. I for not have a problem with this. I mean, for 17 years, we've suspended rules and so forth, and we've also had two readings, like from the mayor's office, when it came to something that was very serious on the budget, that they needed to get it approved on the two readings. I don't have a problem with this.
Historically, part of the problem is that grant applications, financing issues, don't necessarily go on the council's more lugubrious calendar, and so, they don't meet our clock, and consequently, there is a request for second readings to qualify, in many cases, for additional funding. Or there's a deadline that states certain, that precedes our council meeting, and two alternatives, one, we could actually call for a special council meeting in lieu of suspending rules. But, and I think should something reach that critical point, if there's dissent within the council, then it would make sense to do that. The point, in fact, actually, is Counselor Murphy pointed out, there is, to my memory, never been any resistance to anyone who calls for not suspending rules. If a member objects, it's not written in the rules, it's not codified by what's being described, but it has been the general feel of it. And part of, and this has been Counselor Adams' scrutiny, due to Counselor Adams' scrutiny, it's very important, because the rules are, the council rules are not the law necessarily, but they are our rules, and they're established, not just for us, but hopefully for future councils that will convene and refer to those rules. We've modified them on occasion to adapt to technology, to adapt to efficiency and the like, but they don't have the same, I don't know, sanctity that, say, the charter does. So, it is, as Counselor Spector pointed out, the purpose of the rules is to promote transparency and effective governance, and I really do, and I appreciate any comments to that effect, but I think we're pretty assiduous when we deal with that. And once again, thanks to Counselor Adams' diligence on this point, so.
Thanks.
Any other discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shera?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shera?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shera?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shera?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
And next up is, and that is passed in first reading, and it will be subject to second reading, unless anyone wants to suspend rules on that, which I don't think they do. It will be at the next council meeting. This is to amend the Charter Rules and Finance Committee, and refer to Number 11, the Order of Business, and first, I'll accept a motion.
Well, I'd maybe refer it to ordinance, because it's never been there.
Okay, there's a motion, refer to ordinance.
Second.
Second, and there's the second. Counselor Adams, would you like to...
Yeah, thank you. It should be on for referral, and this is just, there are just some suggestions about what we've talked about, as far as if we want to streamline the Finance Committee meetings, which occur in the full council meetings. So, I've made a proposal, and I spoke with Solicitor Seawall today, and he told me that he'd like to further consider it with me. So, if he makes some suggestions, and I incorporate them, I'll bring that to the ordinance committee when they consider this, if it happens before that point.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes, maybe, Council President, you could explain, why did it come on the agenda for a first reading?
I think it was just an oversight, we didn't have it set up for a referral, but...
I think, in my email, where I sent it to the council clerk, I think I state that it was for referrals, I think that's my oversight.
It's, we got it.
Got it.
We got it. Any discussion on the referral? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, that's been referred to ordinance, and we'll come back with a recommendation, or not. I keep referring to the agenda on my screen, which has failed me several times tonight, so I'm going to...this is the...this is to establish the storm water and flood control utility fee, and this is the first reading, and I'm going to read it, please. Order that in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 58, the storm water and flood control utility fee, established by the Code of Ordinances, Section 280-5, shall constitute a municipal...shall constitute a...well, there shouldn't be a plural here, or there shouldn't be, but constitute a municipal charge lien enforceable in accordance with the provisions of Section 58.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
No. It's commenting.
No? It's, okay. Runner?
Speaking of your rules, I just wanted to be clear, I, this, I don't know if this has been referred, or if it's your understanding it doesn't need to be referred, because your...I'm happy to speak to it. I mean, essentially, this is a follow-on to your adoption of storm water utility, and it's something we have in place for water and sewer. It essentially says that if you don't pay your bill, then we can put a municipal lien on it, so that we have an ability to enforce the payment of that.
Now, the motion is to approve. Is there a preference to...
Move to suspend the referral rule.
There's been a motion to suspend the referral rule?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion on that?
On the referral.
On the referral.
All those in favor of suspending the rule for referral, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now, we stand back on the original motion, and Counselor Murphy?
I think the mayor was about to say something when we were...
No, no, it's fine.
Oh, he wasn't, okay. So, essentially, this simply gives the force of Chapter 68 for the collection of the storm water fee that we've talked about extensively so far this year, and it needs to be in place for the beginning of fiscal 15 when we start building.
For July 1st, exactly.
So, it's got to...
Exactly.
It's going to be on a short track one way or the other, we have...
Exactly.
If we refer it, we're going to have to do two readings on it properly to get it done.
And it's a universality, it's creating a universality of rules that apply across the board on...
All the enterprise.
All the enterprise funds. So, it's not exclusive to one particular enterprise fund, as it is now. Any other discussion on this? I...roll call, please.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Spector.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Next up is to amend Chapter 350-7.4, signs permitted in any B District projecting blade signs and standard wall signs by right. This comes with a positive recommendation from ordinance. I'll accept a motion, put it on the floor.
Second.
Does anyone want to speak to this order? Counsel Murphy?
You wouldn't know. It sounds provocative, blade signs. Yeah, but all they are is signs that stick straight off the building.
Exactly.
And planning wants to loosen up their regulations a little bit and start to permit them for first-floor businesses. And they think it's a good idea, and it seemed to make sense, so.
And, well, just to confirm what the counselor said, that right now, a business would have to go to the zoning board of appeals in order to get this, and what this just does is takes, it relaxes that a bit, so that they're allowed by right.
I think it's the right direction to go to, especially for our business people. So, I think this is a very good ordinance.
Is this in also response, does this help offset some of the challenges that arise from sandwich board signs?
Nothing to do with it.
Because these are fixed to buildings.
Yes, this is for buildings.
And they're fixed on buildings.
Right, but what I'm saying is that businesses that were in side streets were not benefiting from people looking down the side street. They needed a waiver and signed the form of a sandwich board.
That's a different, a different sign rule.
Right, no, I understand that. Well, I'm just hoping that relieves some of the issues of the need for a sandwich board.
It may, but apparently not.
They didn't bring that up in discussion as a motivation. They could.
They just did it on a whim. Okay. Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Counsel Klein.
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Spector.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes. That's passed in first reading, and we'll be voting on that at the next scheduled council meeting. This is to amend Chapter 312-82, crossing roadways. This comes with a positive recommendation on the rules and orders and appointments and ordinance. I'll accept the motion.
Second.
Second.
Would you like to speak to this?
The Chair of T and P probably should.
I'm happy to. This is something that was recommended by Department of Public Works. It's a technical change that just updates an old ordinance. It describes how crosswalks should look. Simply says that you need to comply with federal guidelines. This acronym, yeah, manual and uniform traffic control devices, and the state amendments to it. So, and if there are any old crosswalks that aren't in compliance, the nature of this manual is, that's okay, because it's forward-looking. So, there's no concern about that.
Is it possible that, I'm just trying to, in my desperation to try and make everything seem cohesive, is it possible this came up in the course of the discussion of the rainbow crosswalk? Is it?
In terms of chronology, yes, it did. It came up directly afterwards. However, it doesn't validate the crosswalk that is currently painted.
That's the morsalian point. It's the standard, the current rainbow crosswalk conforms to the standards of Massachusetts transportation.
It does. So, the federal government is sanctioning rainbow crosswalks.
So, essentially, rather than having our own ordinance description of a crosswalk, it just references the apostolic book of crosswalks as the authority for crosswalks. And we don't describe them anymore. We just refer to the big book.
Just to get this done.
That's, yeah. Any other comments on this? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel LeBarge.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Spector.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Spector.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Spector.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Spector.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes. That's passed in first reading, and will be, will be voting on that at the next scheduled council meeting. This is to amend Chapter 350-7.4, signs permitted in any B District projecting blade signs and standard wall signs by right. This comes with a positive recommendation from ordinance. I'll accept a motion, put it on the floor.
Second.
Does anyone want to speak to this order? Counsel Murphy?
You wouldn't know. It sounds provocative, blade signs. Yeah, but all they are is signs that stick straight off the building.
Exactly.
And planning wants to loosen up their regulations a little bit and start to permit them for first-floor businesses. And they think it's a good idea, and it seemed to make sense, so.
And, well, just to confirm what the counselor said, that right now, a business would have to go to the zoning board of appeals in order to get this, and what this just does is takes, it relaxes that a bit, so that they're allowed by right.
I think it's the right direction to go to, especially for our business people. So, I think this is a very good ordinance.
Is this in also response, does this help offset some of the challenges that arise from sandwich board signs?
Nothing to do with it.
Because these are fixed to buildings.
Yes, this is for buildings.
And they're fixed on buildings.
Right, but what I'm saying is that businesses that were in side streets were not benefiting from people looking down the side street. They needed a waiver and signed the form of a sandwich board.
That's a different, a different sign rule.
Right, no, I understand that. Well, I'm just hoping that relieves some of the issues of the need for a sandwich board.
It may, but apparently not.
They didn't bring that up in discussion as a motivation. They could.
They just did it on a whim. Okay. Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Counsel Klein.
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Spector.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes. That's passed in first reading, and will be voted on at the next scheduled council meeting. This is to amend Chapter 312-82, crossing roadways. This comes with a positive recommendation on the rules and orders and appointments and ordinance. I'll accept the motion.
Second.
Second.
Would you like to speak to this?
The Chair of T and P probably should.
I'm happy to. This is something that was recommended by Department of Public Works. It's a technical change that just updates an old ordinance. It describes how crosswalks should look. Simply says that you need to comply with federal guidelines. This acronym, yeah, manual and uniform traffic control devices, and the state amendments to it. So, and if there are any old crosswalks that aren't in compliance, the nature of this manual is, that's okay, because it's forward-looking. So, there's no concern about that.
Is it possible that, I'm just trying to, in my desperation to try and make everything seem cohesive, is it possible this came up in the course of the discussion of the rainbow crosswalk? Is it?
In terms of chronology, yes, it did. It came up directly afterwards. However, it doesn't validate the crosswalk that is currently painted.
That's the morsalian point. It's the standard, the current rainbow crosswalk conforms to the standards of Massachusetts transportation.
It does. So, the federal government is sanctioning rainbow crosswalks.
So, essentially, rather than having our own ordinance description of a crosswalk, it just references the apostolic book of crosswalks as the authority for crosswalks. And we don't describe them anymore. We just refer to the big book.
Just to get this done.
That's, yeah. Any other comments on this? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel LeBarge.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Spector.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Spector.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Spector.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
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 Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
I'd like to make, I think this is a friendly amendment. It doesn't change it substantively. In fact, it could be, tell me if this is just wrong, but the rationale section of it, I know that doesn't necess, it's not part of the ordinance in terms of changing the code, but, I mean, the ordinance committee didn't write that rationale, and I just would prefer to strike that paragraph. And it says something, for example, therefore, public hearings will likely be continued to September. I mean, I don't know that that's true or not, so I'd rather just strike the rationale paragraph if that's considered a friendly amendment.
I'll second.
So, do you see where they're?
I do. The whole paragraph?
You want to delete that paragraph?
I'd like to make it a rational if I could.
Counsel Murphy to the?
Just to speak to the, how we got to that point, the last ordinance committee meeting had a joint public hearing on the seven-and-over unit issue, and it was quite clear at that hearing that some of the work was still incomplete, and we didn't want to begin the approval process, but the moratorium runs out July 1, and it was very clear that the process would not be complete by the time the moratorium ran out. And when you add to the fact that we were basically consumed in June with budget hearings and budget, and then over the summer, we only have one meeting, and a lot of interested parties are on vacation or not really paying attention, we wanted to extend the moratorium to the end of the year, but it is, it's altogether possible that at our next public hearing, we close the public hearing, but then people want to come to council and speak on the issue in the affected neighborhoods. And our feeling was, we may not actually vote in council about it until after the summer season, when everybody's back, but it doesn't necessarily mean the public hearing will stay open that long, which is, I think, why Counsel O'Donnell's saying, we'll probably close the public hearing, but it may not come here until the fall, when everybody's paying attention again and not on vacation. Because I really do hate to do anything substantive in July and August, because a lot of people aren't around and can't comment.
Can we first vote on the amendment, please? Any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amended?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, the amendment passes, and now back to the original order. And Counsel Murphy's explained the process. I understand you had an interesting ordinance meeting, so thank you all for your good work.
I think it was very, was very formative.
Yeah.
And there's a little more work to be done, but, I mean, it showed how public hearings are really part of the process, and the input from there really makes a difference.
Yeah, and I would just say, it was encouraging in a sense that we can do more work in the same way, and hopefully make more progress, but we need more time.
Now, I'm gonna ask a procedural question of anyone who happens to know it. Does, maybe just to be safe, but does a moratorium require a roll call though?
To be safe.
To be safe.
I think we should.
We can just be safe. I'm just trying to.
I call for a roll call.
I do, too. I'll second that.
But does anyone know the answer to that question? Okay, good. That's fine. Then, I'm not the only person that doesn't know. I just, I hate to be the only idiot in the room, so.
Probably not.
It would seem that it would, I don't think, certainly it's not been qualified as such, but there has been a roll call called for this for the moratorium, so.
Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shara.
Yes.
Counsel Spector.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Carney.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy.
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 Yes.
I'd like to request that we take the next three as a?
We skipped over them.
Well, that one, it's actually in twice. It comes up at the end.
Yes, it does. Sorry.
It's coming around again. I will second Counsel LeBarge's motion.
The next three being to amend 312-102. That's Schedule 1 parking prohibition all times on Maple Street, and that's also Chapter 312-104, limited-time parking on Maple Street. And then 312-117, on-street and off-street handicap parking spaces on Maple Street.
Move to refer to transportation and parking.
Motion's been made to refer these three to transportation parking and seconded. Any further discussion on the referral? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Where's everyone on their bets here?
I think we just did that.
The, next up is to amend Chapter 350, Section 2.1, affordable units. Move to refer to, and the motion's been made to refer to ordinance. It's for second. There's a second. Any discussion on the referral?
I think.
Open mic. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Have I missed anything?
The one we just came around twice.
Yeah, it came around twice, so covered. It was covered. I have no updates, I think. We've announced our public hearing, and so on and so forth. Are there any committee chairs that have any updates or announcements?
I didn't give you a full.
We did. I did. I did. So, that's, that announcement came early on. So, yeah, just to reprise that, there will be a public hearing for the budget, June, was it June 9? Not June 9, it's Thursday.
Our next meeting is my last one.
June 5.
Yeah.
June 5, at 7:05 PM, hearing council chambers, this is regarding the mayor's proposed FY budget. And please send me, adjourn yet?
I've just.
Okay. Please send me your recommendations as to who you would like to see in budget hearings, and preferred dates, if possible.
You want those?
I'm sorry?
What did you just say?
I would, if you could send me the, the department heads in the departments you would, Counselor, I'm telling you, if you would like to hear, if you would send to me your recommendations, the departments that you would like to hear from in the budget hearing, and then also dates that work for you.
I gave her the departments that I want, and I'll give you the dates.
Okay. Is there any new business? I don't think so. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
All those in favor, return and just say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all very much. Have a great night.